Okay, let's start. Morning, it's August 20th, 2019, 10:03 AM. Yeah, I'm following the meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Story County Attorney. Before we move on to the agenda, I have an announcement, we have some sad news in Story County. Sorry, we have some sad news that I just became aware of. Dave Steenland, who has been working in County should cook for 22 years, died Saturday. His visit to the firm, Mr. Steenland, is at 5:00 to 7:00 PM tonight at Memorial Lutheran Church here, and his funeral is tomorrow at, I believe, 10:30. So, let's hold his family in our class. And now, if you would like to, if you'd be joining us for questions.
I pledge allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to your help with the justice of our nation under God, indivisible, with great dignity and justice.
Are we ready? I still don't think I got it going in that day. It's not recording, it's not recording. But whatever happened after, it's during each, go ahead. So, do you have video or audio?
I'll watch it during the meeting, make sure it's not.
Okay, good. Okay, um, next up, we're going to move to the motion for adoption of today's agenda.
I still haven't moved to action, he hasn't.
Second, Olson.
I.
Edens.
I.
Mark and I.
Doubtful agenda. Next, we'll go to public comment number one, this comment period is for the public to address on this on today's agenda. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment at this point? Seeing no one move to microphone, we'll post public comments session. Next, we have agents reports, and only the government Human Services would like to address us. Yes, please, they're in the microphone. And you have with you, Chris Angie Reese, she was also in the county department with DHS. Angie?
Good morning. So, being, this is the first time I've actually met with the board. It's very nice to meet you ladies. It's been a few, probably less than a year since I've met with the board. We used to present all of your reports to the board prior, and I will present one to you today because I don't believe it's any related to you. It kind of was just basically a meditation of how we stand with the head, maybe a little bit about what our DCAT board is doing in the county, and then that was about it. We didn't have any other topics that we put in there that were interested in the board. So, what I'd like to do is send you what we used to do, and maybe send you a proposed agenda change that I think might be, or not agenda, but topic or report that might give interest to you, that might give more value to your tired attention versus what we used to do. I just didn't feel like it had any value or depth at all, and I just didn't always return to it.
I appreciate that. Does anybody have any feedback for the last one now, or which one, and we respond individually, everyone responds as a group? Well, that's right, we would respond individually to the agenda.
That's good. And, yeah, I would welcome any feedback as far as if there are things you really want to know. It's, I don't know how deep you want to know DHS and the work that we're doing, any legislation that is coming, we have some big changes coming our way as it comes to the family-first movement and all of that, and the impact of the work that we do for clients in this county. So, there's just a lot of that sort of thing, I think, how well we're doing with processing benefits for clients who are Medicaid and food stamps and cash assistance, that sort of things we do both sides of that. Also, we do the social piece, plus the information piece, so we can certainly report a little bit more depth and detail in those reports if I have something that interests you.
Now, to be honest, definitely with me, when you say you're looking at, we say, so far from review, and doing the highlight of what you could be.
Uh, probably before the end of the month, I'm thinking, yeah, if that's okay.
I like that, yeah, I like that. It's nice to keep it fresh and keep it, like, interesting.
Definitely, I just want to go through the review rather than just bring like the old, I'm not fishing, you know.
And did you have anything to add?
Um, I'm here if you have any questions to the questions about DHS right now.
I don't know, I'm pretty involved with DHS. Well, I think we're, 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 we'll give you some details that will help you. I think it interests you for you guys to, to get to know a little bit about the business that we do. Appreciate that you want to consider our time and those information. Thank you, thank you. Next, we have workforce, and that now will go in quarter report, run a dryer, and just came up. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like us to? Well, it's, uh, I'm trying to be with you this morning, because this is the first opportunity I've had to actually present to the, the new board, so welcome, Lisa. Uh, I'm going to give you a snapshot of really what's going on with our county-wide workforce solutions initiative. I do realize if I do give knowledge, you know, our very generous support of this program, and that's really what allows us to really execute a county-wide initiative. So, I'm going to start first by looking a bit at unemployment. Interestingly enough, as I was walking out the door, the July members hit my office. So, uh, what's, uh, in front of you there is actually the June report for my workforce development. You're saying, gosh, I don't know the last time in Story County unemployment was over 2%. Well, it was actually a year ago. So, June and July are, shouldn't be a surprise to anybody by virtue of our largest county employer, what happens through the summer months, that we actually kind of enter into what would be considered almost a more normal average unemployment rate with the state of Iowa in the months of June and July. So, June, we were at 2.3%, and July was 2.2. But probably more important to look at is a year ago in July, we were at 1.8. So, we are up 1,000 jobs overall over a year ago of last year. Government is down 200, and, um, on the primary sector, we're actually down 1,200 jobs. So, a little snapshot on really the consistent monthly measurement on the map in the third quarter to give a report will be back down to kind of the lowest unemployment rate in the country again. I want to talk, go ahead.
I just have a question, it says A's up there.
So, did, Tom, it's the A's MSA, which would be considered in Story County. Oh, yeah. So, yeah, thanks for the clarification on that. So, there's only, only the MSAs are provided in there in the full unemployment report, but I think it is actually the A's MSA, which more or less is in Story County. Um, in terms of Story County, uh, some of you are familiar with the concept of a labor shed. Ideally, the line goes up, they may agree, two years. The state of Iowa announced support for connecting labor sheds across the state of Iowa a couple of years ago. We were not in last year's group, we are in this year's group, and, uh, what I would report is that initiative is now starting. Uh, the letters have hit our employers requesting some quote information. Our offices are coordinating our messages to our employers, as well as doing a press release, digital media, including in our weekly correspondence. It's really important that we have a good participation from our employers, so that we can begin then pushing out efforts to get a representative sample of our, of our workforce to complete a survey. So, uh, it'll be completed a little less than a year from now. Um, we're doing half of the state of Iowa, including all of our neighbors, and, um, we will at the start of the year request wage data for 2019, so we have the most current information to share with our employers as we wait for the full study to be released in June. Taking a look at our job board, uh, we actually filled more than halfway through the year. Actually, I'm going to tell you, last week, we had 62,000 searches on that. We did a virtual career fair that last week that was lovely seeing, and lots of people checked out our site, but we're on over 60,000 searches on that independent site. Uh, we have a thousand, over a thousand registered job seekers. So, people always say, gosh, you know, it's hard to find work, well, we've got a lot of the job seekers that want to work here, and I remind folks all the time to take advantage of that free service to connect to the registered job seekers. We have 377 registered employers, those are the folks that can actually look at those job seekers. We sweep them indeed. If you close directly to the site, there's many matching capabilities, and because of your support, we're able to offer that service free to any Story County employer.
Could you remind me, if you please, about, on the 377 registered employers, do they have to be a member of the A's?
No, they do not. Oh, no, they do not. Any employment in Story County registered, and, uh, again, we, it's just a matter of trying to get the word out, folks to take the time to actually become a registered user. I would highlight, uh, that, I see a list in the back room, and Story County is very good about posting their jobs directly to the site, and both Noel and Alyssa are registered on the working site. Again, that's a Story County job board. I want to highlight a little bit about one of our newer initiatives this year, and we partnered with the Technology Association of Iowa and become a sponsor of the Iowa Project. It's, should be a surprise if any of us are very huge need for software engineers, computer science folks. This is a really effort targeted at those folks that have ties to Iowa in the technology field. They work on growing their database, and we use that database to market opportunities in Story County. Uh, that database grew by 1,000 mans in the second quarter. Uh, in May, I believe I talked about our meetup that we, we participated in up in Minneapolis. I don't even know that Jada knows, but we have an employer that's actually close to hiring one of the folks we met up in Minneapolis. So, we'll be excited to participate in the Denver event. Uh, they keep moving the date on us, it's making it harder to plan, but, uh, we're very excited about getting to that marketplace to talk about opportunities here. Uh, we have, this summer, put a really focused effort on marketing to that database. Here's just a really cute glimpse at one of the postcards we sent out, and on the back it talks about all the neat things going on in, in Story County that people are missing, and it's kind of as a vintage book. Uh, so we sent out a postcard mailer, and then we found it up with an email that included testimonials, quality of life, um, cost of living, quality of, uh, yeah, just a bunch of things, and then directly to the working site. So, that went out to three or four thousand people, and we continue to track those efforts. Uh, they do a newsletter, and we're creating a monthly feature on one of our technology companies to bring to that electronic publication, and then anytime we have quality of life information, we're sharing it with the staff at TAI. So, we do anticipate that that will be an initiative we continue to support as we continue to see growing needs with our technology jobs across the county. Something I want to also highlight is a partnership with DMAC. Um, software engineers, the other job category we need a lot of is maintenance technicians. So, uh, we're promoting with DMAC, um, uh, two really unique opportunities for industrial maintenance, and then manufacturing production technicians. And, um, we did the program last fall, or last winter, into spring, we graduated 12 individuals from five existing industries. So, uh, five industries identified folks that were good employees, that needed skills to mentor manufacturing, uh, industrial maintenance tech, which are very, very, very good jobs, high skilled, and, um, so also now have been promoted within their organizations. And highlight, the gentleman in the front lower row in the blue shirt, uh, actually went on to, with the support of Burke, is actually going on to get his two-year degree. So, uh, quite a story in how his life has been impacted by participating in the program. Uh, for the most part, it's free for people to attend from a tuition standpoint. There's lots of unique training funds out there in terms of upskilling, and so we work really hard to try to find a program so that the tuition side of it is covered, and then, um, working with the employers to actually, uh, make sure they're free and they're scheduled to attend. We will launch both programs, we've tried to launch the production technician with really no success, and people lack of interest, but we're working hard again to try to get that launched in September at the end of that training. It's about 60 hours. We'll actually host a job fair with manufacturers that are hiring. Uh, again, we're really trying to get the word out about these opportunities for folks to learn some new skills, think about manufacturing, uh, so any, any assistance from anybody in terms of getting that out. I actually have a piece on the manufacturing technician, so if you could, I'd like to leave that with you, I'll probably leave it with Robbie as well, uh, in terms of getting the word out on that. And, uh, we are working also this time around with our human service providers to assist in getting the word out to the folks that maybe a veteran thought about working. It's always 40 hours, probably overtime, whether you like it or not, and benefits and retirement, a chance for advancement, so, uh, great jobs and better benefits are growing, growing number of sector here in Story County.
I did have to throw that in just a minute. I actually talked about working in's and, uh, and manufacturing production while I was at a service club, talking to a woman, and so, uh, basically heard her some, all right, which is, so, but just a suggestion, maybe, maybe you're a tour of these service clubs, even though maybe those people participants, maybe are older, but they're children, it's all along the back, and not all of them are going to come with great, for anybody, was that?
Well, thanks for sharing that, and that's, uh, that's great, great advice. I know we try to cover as many service clubs as we can with our new staff, but I can encourage, first even for a short timeline, that all of us that are just at those clubs that are more involved, but, uh, great advice, I know, for us. Uh, looking a little bit about what we've got ahead this fall, we're gonna, we're gonna go try to recruit some Panthers over there in Cedar Falls. If you've not participated in that career fair before, we're gonna give it a shot. We've got great jobs, outstanding wages, and I think we've got a real value proposition to some of those graduates over at Cedar Falls, we're giving that a shot this fall. Um, like I said, I mentioned the Hiring Our Heroes event. One day, over our traction on working, which is over 300% in one day, folks are participating in the Hiring Our Heroes event. And we have, again, a real opportunity with folks that are veterans, with your partnership and Homebase Iowa, our Homebase Iowa employers, so, um, it was a good event, and there were 475 people out of 700 that would consider the location, and so we have thumbed up with those folks with an email, and we'll continue to market working to that group. This fall, we'll be participating in engineering and in IT, so again, two really targeted skilled areas that, quite frankly, does not produce enough graduates in those two areas to be our needs, and we need to run our, our, our net of where we'll try to recruit from, and the career fair is at a virtual level is a cost-effective way to do that. I'm gonna put a plug in for a big event being held at A's High School, October 17th. Some of you participated last year in their big fall day event. You know, it's about 1,700 students in the high school, so I'm guessing if we threw everybody, all the other six school districts in the county, we probably wouldn't get to that many, so it's a real, uh, unique opportunity to, to visit with our largest school districts. They're gonna need a hundred volunteers that day. They're asking for a half-day commitment, and folks that are interested in either speaking on a profession, or job seeking, or participating in the career fair, so, um, I'd be glad to help make the connections to A's High if you're interested in, um, working on that. We have two county-wide career fairs with Iowa Works, um, still happening yet, in 2019 will be the Intellical Library on October 2nd. Uh, we had an event in August that we actually did a half-hour for veterans ahead of time, which was a really neat addition to our efforts, but those are correct 10 to noon. And then, in December, we're gonna actually utilize the beautiful facility in Story County Medical to host the job fair here, and invite our employers to participate, and we're gonna intensify our, our marketing efforts over in Marshall County around that event. Uh, we'll do a mailer to the folks that are unemployment benefits, uh, in and around Marshall County to attend that event. So, we're hoping to, uh, we're, we're 20 or 30 employers to participate in that event, and want to distribute that at the end of the year, as Burke is getting ready to ramp up their hiring right after the first year. We got a lot of folks looking, the folks here in, in Nevada, but specifically, again, trying to bolster the efforts moving into 2020 to assist with the 200 positions that Burke's gonna need to hire. Okay, a couple other things I wanted to talk about. Well, the apprenticeships were, uh, the Nevada School is working really hard with the three existing employers to actually bring an apprenticeship, modeled after the Wemar and Pella model. Um, it'll take probably a year from now until we actually have students back to really work with those employers, but gotta start somewhere, and it's, we're very initiative on the staff at Nevada School to move through that process. Um, we're getting very close to launching a portal on our website that would be a place that'll also connect to the state system, that connects schools and business to opportunities to work together. That's one of the enhancements that we've been able to do, is we've added a workforce coordinator to our staff. Uh, in June, Allie, who's our workforce coordinator, facilitated something called Teacher Free Teaching for the Workforce, it's a term in other spots in Iowa. They had 12 participants, four different Story County school districts, and it included 21 businesses where teachers actually went behind the scenes and heard more about what our employers are looking for in students and how they can partner. Uh, so it was a very full week, and, uh, something we look to model and even enhance participation moving into 2020. Uh, sometime the week of October 7th, maybe that day is actually October 4th, that's probably when you're gonna see some of us again. Uh, but the following week, we're gonna promote an initiative during Manufacturing Week. The following week, we're gonna host a parent and student event with our manufacturers to, we know that part of our challenge to getting kids to think about manufacturing is to get their parents to understand the great value and outstanding jobs we have available. So, we're gonna be one of the first, uh, first to actually utilize the New Series and Alliant Energy facility in the research park. So, excited about being able to add something new, uh, to increase exposure in manufacturing. The other thing I'm gonna leave you with today is, um, we have revamped what was a program called Unit Leadership Ames. Uh, it was a full year program, looks a lot like Leadership Ames, if you were a part of that in the past. Uh, we've opened it up again a lot because of your generous support to county-wide, and instead of adding one small group of students go to all the events, we're gonna open up five different events and let juniors and seniors sign up to those events that interest them, and so I have to get my notes, because I usually mess this up. So, Hyland stands for the first event on September 20th will be on philanthropy, second event on November 8th will be on inclusion, on Monday, January 20th will be on leadership, Friday, February 21st will be on opportunity, and on April 3rd, it'll be on teamwork. And so, Allie has met with all of the school districts in the county, as well as our guidance counselors, to encourage students to, to follow up and become part of the program, but I have a flyer on that, we'd appreciate you getting the word out about that. And the whole idea is, is to make sure it's not an exclusive program, it's an inclusive program that will target students that wanna participate in all five topics, or one topic in particular that might interest them. We just wrapped up our summer intern program, and I wanted to give you a few, uh, high points of this year's programming. We did four events, we had a total of 226 interns that participated from across the county, out of stress. Uh, we had 43 companies that sent folks, and that number is up from about 30 last year. It's probably one of the numbers I'm most pleased about. On average, our, the interns went to two events, um, and, uh, as a whole, we averaged 121 attendees at each event, and so, uh, excited about being able to expose folks. Uh, and I'm, I'm a point to REG, they had 43, 46 interns, and two-thirds of them were from outside of the area. They really recruited from outside the area, so it was really fun to be able to talk to students from across the country about all the great things we have going on. So, that is the end of my report. One last thing I want to talk about is, if you don't know, we're, we're working with the City of Ames and Iowa State University, um, to actually, um, host the second Diversity and Inclusion Conference on October 29th. So, um, we're just starting to promote that event, and, um, the feedback that we received last year was, was very positive. There's a lot of interaction, um, around this initiative with our employers, and I'm looking at Alyssa, even our SHRM chapter stepped forward this year and decided to sponsor it, because it's such an important topic across our employer. So, I'll leave you with the same date card there as well for that. And before I hand it over to Dustin, I welcome any questions you might have about workforce, any questions, friend. Thanks for having with me, it's kind of a long report.
Thank you. It's a good morning, board. We'll just start out here by talking about professional development. So, that is really useful this year, I started taking advantage of some significant opportunities for professional development, and I also thank you, because it's true support that underpins my ability to do that, to benefit our communities in reporting work. Uh, but the first one is Heartland, that's a deep long e-commerce development course that's held outside of Kansas City, that's really the first step in e-commerce certification. So, you gotta go over these courses, into that basic e-commerce, where you, you know, to further professional development. The second one is the Iowa World Development Summit, which is held in Brinnell this year. Uh, this event was the event where we announced the catalyst for workforce, which I'm gonna share with you. $2.9 million was bished out to communities all over the state of Iowa, to 29 projects, each receiving $100,000. Two of those communities that receive awards are located in Story County, so we're able to secure $200,000 just in this funding cycle alone. And this also comes at the heels, there are Karen's in the crowd here, the city of Xerim, that this comes with the hills of Xerim Award previous cycle. So, the three cycles we received, we had two sites that received three awards, received notification earlier this week that they're opening up the workshops again, which means this grant is gonna be coming up soon, and so I would encourage all of our communities to look at that opportunity. We know that the current maintenance of downtown structures is expensive because it can result in demolition, and we don't want to see that happen. We'd rather take a peaceful approach to downtown development, hopefully seeing one building at a time, each community we can, to really spur the economy and downtown minimization. Which I'll talk a little bit about in a second. Um, and the third thing here is the Smart Conference, and John worked, since the most project in the state of Nevada, and our office was completely engaged in it, but the work project did receive a single business retention and expansion project award. Know that Nevada's not in our contract with the government services, but that project certainly has slower effects on the other communities, so, um, good work for John and this, as well, and our, and our team as well, the state of Nevada, to secure that award.
Dustin, so the second one, the Iowa World Development Summit, you said they're real for the grant to begin the grant cycle, again, so, well, they have it on this summer.
You know, we, you know, some of, and my expectation is that the next patch of awards allows those awards at that event. What happens with this, with this grant is that you have to attend a workshop to be eligible to apply, and then you submit a pre-application, usually toward the end of November, and then you're invited to submit a full application by the December.
So, um, is the workshop open also to elected officials who'd like to know more? So is the workshop open also to elected officials who'd like to develop more of that?
Oh, absolutely, sure. And we, we developed our own resource center. That's the organization that hosts those events. And there and in several communities, I think the closest one is Hackley, which is interesting that's the, you know, basically workforce.
So I think, I think just maybe all three board members would be interested in having you with us, you know, when that workshop registers. Sure. You know, sending that out to all the communities as well.
Sure. And I'll actually be, next week I'll be at the Iowa Downtown Conference interview and the very first workshop and then launching this application round. That's going to take us there. So I'll be at attendance there, but I'll send out the dates everywhere.
Thank you.
And the next thing, just back to downtown revitalization, Adam and Karen can speak to this at late here. But I did go to Xerim today, it's just a few weeks ago, where they held an open house for their building. This nearing completion, I'm guessing is very, very close because you can see these photos here of the work that they've already completed. This is the old main building. It has commercial units, it has housing, or housing units, and you know their story. The city council has not yet seen a price for this. They began, they started discussions about that. And the idea is we're going to keep these low costs so that they're, they can accommodate local families who are also for first housing. The second thing I'd like to talk about is Collins. I feel like I talk about Collins every single time I come to here, come speak to you and tell me that there's a new business there, but there's no again, another business in downtown Collins. And this is an interesting business as Joanie Crickets, she raises credits for food consumption. There's a huge market for that apparently. I did not know about that until I met this person, but, but she's going right into downtown Collins to, to really ramp up her business and operations there. And then on the Cambridge Downtown Revitalization Project, USDA, they've finally announced, I think they're going to shut down, it took some time for them to get here. They did finally announce a reward of $236,000, some like dollars to create a new R L F wealth fund to support the house restoration in downtown Cambridge. And similar to Xerim, it's a double unit property where both sides are going to have two commercial units along the floor. And you're exploring the limit of three housing units, I think because of low costs.
This is the same project that we've been asked to discuss as a possible grant or certificate or some grant that we're looking for, is correct?
Correct.
To find a name for it. Because I hear it called region hall sometimes and opera hall and so, so let's, let's want to make sure that.
The reason for that, the opera house is the, is the historic purpose of the building. It's a commercial use of the building. And American agents, the more recent things for the building. So folks have a comment on that. I will say that they raised quite a lot of funding for this project. Like I mentioned with the catalyst grant, that's a $3,000 they raised. USDA has to make this fair as well and that's why they're supporting it in that way. They're still working on fundraising, so there's some options to try to build those. Cities also will go and step in and cover a portion of that to make this happen.
Okay.
And then just general updates. Thank you, Akamay, for your claim to economic development. We're, we're available for that. And we're also pursuing multiple project deals from Canadian Venture Network. We call it the CDM for short. CDM's located in Minneapolis. It's an event itself three times per year. The way that they described it is it's EDA for communities and businesses. And so businesses will present to a group of economic developers and the steps where they're not interviewed in their town. So I just went through a couple of these a couple of weeks ago, got some leads from that event. And we're continuing to follow up with the leads from previous events ago. Rollin' Area Development Corporation, they want to secure two land option areas to provide housing and industrial development. Do you know anything about land option areas? You kind of, kind of something yet because you're basically asking the landlord to tie up this land for a set amount of time, for duration of time. As the R A C will only be, will be the exclusive, how do these users next purchase that land? But the idea is that you're locking at a price so that we can then market that land for, for an elevator, so that's true. Andy's in there and we had a brief meeting last night, talked about the future role in this as well and how we're going to look at that industrial area and then also figure out which offices are more private for housing and elevator. As you know, our office is ready to assist for the middle applicants here, here for the presentations as well. Very excited. As you know, some of the projects that I've been working with communities on are included in those requests issued. And the Slender City Council is also now getting a little expansion project. They're going to be adding ordinance to their books that is called 427 rights. This will lead to sliding stills activation for this particular project. You're going through steps to take care of that. Paul Wilson's Auctions are located in their new building. It's, it's a beautiful structure. I think Amy posted again, State Bridge and Post Photo of her on State Bridge Space would be, it's a beautiful building, sort of excited about that. And then as Brandon mentioned, preparing for Manufacturing Day on October 4th. So one of the more exciting things that happened in the past, important too, was I joined, I had the opportunity to join Sister City Elevation from Des Moines to Shejek in Chita, in Kabei Products, which is the province where Beijing is located. I worked at a office on that trip, it was just a little bit over a week. We were there, but we talked to business leaders in China and Beijing as well as government officials in several cities. We participated in a exhibition, first ever exhibition of sister cities that have a relationship to communities and county province. So I'm sitting next to a person from Sweden, for example, who does the same kind of work we do. We had an interesting conversation. You know, she asked me what do you, how we build the channel to Sweden base and kind of find out the, and see exactly how we come on the channel. So it's really interesting to have those conversations on an international scale. Though also Chinese foreign investment is something that we're very interested in. International foreign investment, period, is something that we're interested in to benefit of our residents in Story County. The organizer of this trip, who is basically the staff, a person for the sister city commission for this relationship in Des Moines. She also runs a China Iowa Bridge, recently the Business Home of the Year, and that'd be pretty impactful to that in Des Moines. But she is in American Story County too, and some of the advantages that we have. And so why I think this event in life for us is not necessarily an immediate impact on the business climate in Story County, but in a kind of a network that can withdraw some conventions that, that we can lean on if we're going to ever have this kind of foreign investment. So, you know, true that if I knew some financial concern right now, it's a bit issues, sometimes there are barriers to foreign investment. And so we assess that as well and as a result, we'll be keeping, keeping these opportunities in life in Story County. Any questions about that? And then the final thing I'd like to share is the Economic Development Leader Summit. We talked about this for a long time. Leanne and I have been working very diligently to this. The event is on Friday, September 20th, 2019. We are just wrapping up the program as well, and I hope to have a registration link come up this week. So the meetings, are you aware, they have to save the date. We're going to talk about everything from how it's going to develop, as well as Dr. membership and our work with communities. Some of the speakers include Davey Markis from the Small Business Development Center, Monch Johnson, for Jersey and Reddy, as I've pronounced it, Sandy Earpick, who's been for many years for the farm here, was also a B A C council member. And our keynote is actually going to be on Iowa Economic Development Group, the Iowa Project, so we should close that out right before we go to lunch. And then hopefully at lunch, we'll have the communities themselves speak about some of the projects that they've seen, you know, might some benefits to their communities. And that's it? I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions? No more? Is there any more? We'll, we'll, I'm just gonna crash in minutes. I imagine you'd like to build a mansion, Mr. Tino Me?
No, we haven't especially with the building.
About how, so you're talking about?
I'm sorry, sorry. Back to number eight, discussion regarding housing needs assessment in Story County.
So there's John and John Dustin instead, and it goes down there. I love how you all work together. We all like to be interchangeable from place.
And I'll just, I'll just introduce this discussion here. John's here because he's interested in housing needs assessment as well. I'm here to, to at least speak on behalf of Drew. Drew Hamper is the chair of the Story County Economic Development Group. At a previous meeting, in a previous quarter, we had a previous meeting, I've never been formally able to express an interest in improving, or we're going for putting together, I guess you could say, an idea for a housing needs assessment. They don't really have much direction, they just have an interest in this type of, type of work. Specifically for the county to work with Leanne to draft requests for proposals on housing needs. And going back to some of the context here, I think you said once the last housing needs assessment, so it's been quite some time since we, we've had some truly bad talks. Story County was included in the Iowa by accident securities housing study, however, that focus really on the urban areas, especially Ames. So the level of that, how we have for the communities isn't quite there. We know that BURF is, BURF is bringing employment there soon. And so our community is really going to have to accommodate that workforce expansion with housing that, that's really going to, you know, appeal to, to folks that have these steel levels and have these incomes. But that's where we, our Story County Economic Development Group was just interested in this. They wanted to come to the board with a discussion of how we proceed with this topic. And John can speak more specifically about the leaders.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Sorry, John Paul with the Nevada Economic Development Councils who are going here representing today. So Dustin brought you the, the exact context that, that, that this all kind of falls under is that, you know, Nevada is going through a tremendous expansion right now. They're trying to figure out the full extent of their housing needs and how to best approach that. And that's through a couple of things, that's supporting local builders as well as working to attract outside development individuals for both single family housing as well as, you know, more market style or tavernal style housing. But they're finding that they're, they're suffering for lack of tools to be able to effectively make that case for the local entrepreneurs or local builders. It's being able to offer them support so that they go to a bank and, and the bank can feel confident in the project. And for those outside developers, it's, it's making the case that we know that, that there's a need and, and we can represent that and that we can achieve market rate, particularly for apartments. New apartment building hasn't been built in Nevada since 1991. So the fear of, of a new apartment building that's going to be market rate is, is pretty tremendous for those outside developers. So the Nevada City Council recently approved the strategic planning process to move forward with housing needs assessment for Nevada. And because of that conversation kind of tangentially moving with this one, I encourage them to allow me to come, come forward before you all today to have this conversation because I think that if, if, if the county has an interest in moving forward with a housing needs assessment for Nevada, the county, it certainly doesn't make sense to extend those resources twice to go effective at the same time. So I just wanted to be here to support this, this topic and specifically touch on the Nevada component of that.
Does the county have a budget for that?
They don't at this point. All they've done is proven as one of their top priority issues. So if, so though it's a top priority issue, there's nothing in their budget to align on in their budget for housing needs assessment. It likely either have to come back as amendments to their budget or in a future year's budget. It was just simply as part of their strategic planning process, it was an identity. And one of their top.
They're leaning on loans to finance. We don't know that yet.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't specifically speak to that. That being said, I, I think that because of their interest, I mean, it's certainly a conversation that could be irritated, but I can't speak for them. I, I can't, can't even really speak for the A E C, that, that boards will lay this to their resources. But I can tell you that in Nevada, housing, the housing needs assessment is so, so crucial to moving forward on, on the housing discussion that they're willing to have all, all the conversations that it takes to do something.
Okay, well, she said she wonders. I really would like to talk about the background here and why I am very much a proponent and one of the originators of this whole idea that we need to update. Brenda's in the audience too. And serving, you know, she's, we had a big discussion with Leanne and it was definitely a high part of discussions on this in part, but also the fact that Brenda sits on Story County Housing Trust Fund Board, also, you know, housing this whole discussion. So here is, is the situation as from what I presented, pushing this and then we pushing this since, since 2017, is that the smaller communities in fact are not experiencing the kind of growth and they don't have any uniform idea about what kind of opportunities they might be able to have compared to the rest of the county except for informally exchanging. And our last housing needs assessment was so out of date. And during the same last two years, we've had employment growth that has happened outside of Ames, in addition to the Ames one. So the previous boards, and you'll have to go back, yes, three, two configurations developed. As we discussed this in moving forward, part of the reason was to turn over the Story County Economic Development Group instead of staying here with Ames, is that they're, the other two supervisors, I think Grant was, so wanting to know that there was interest out there in the communities for it. We've hit some hurdles for it, but have already, I believe, gone forward. One of them was when the Iowa Finance Authority announced that they were going to do their own survey, okay, marketing assessment of the statewide. We waited and we waited for that. And when it finally came out, four months overdue, it turned out that there was some, there was Ames data, but there was none of relevance to the level of the 1997 survey needs assessment for the rest of the county. Now Mark Jackson is sitting in the audience and Mark, you sat on the 1997 group, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so that was a very thorough needs assessment that looked at each community individually. There's a part, it's a 500 page report. It looks at each individual community, takes a look at what their challenges are, what their needs are, and it also interrelates then to how the county as a whole can do this. So the next, as we got that information, in fact, I had realized that ICOM wasn't going to be deleted. That was when we turned it over to Story County Economic Development Group. And there happened some discussion at the previous board about we should make Story City, Huxley and Nevada help contribute to it. Here's my opinion about it. It's going to hold it up a little further. And what happens if Nevada says yes, but Story City and, and Huxley say no? Do we leave them out? We already had another, we know hurdle or shift we had to make is that Ames is going through its comprehensive planning. And so there was discussion about whether if they're going to give a comprehensive plan, how do we fit this in if doing a housing needs assessment at the same time? So I mean, I heard I come to city staff and came back and the determination was made that we, we would pay for everything except Ames, which then when Ames is done, that can be melded into the rest of the report before the final report is issued. And that discussion was had over a year ago in that there are some reports due that Vanessa made in Latimer, when they then replayed a HUD in a five year accumulation of reports from Ames anyway. So that data is now supposed, is now done because that was due December 31st of 2018. So this has been a very long process here. And what, what I'm, what I would be frustrated about is that especially if the county would say we have to wait for the, for the other three large communities to decide whether they're going to get in or not, and so that we are, you know, that could take a very long time. And this is overdue. Might have completely overdue for the counties, for the communities that need the growth or as John pointed out, need to have the proof, the third party statistical and narrative information to take to lending institutions, to take to the investors to facilitate growth. And as I've been out in the last two years talking to the smaller communities about what their housing needs and how that might look and what do they think, I had asked about a pilot program, what families had put together, just as floating feedback from that. Each one is different, but each one is going to have their own, they're, be on their own level about where they are and the next hurdle they need to get over. And they could use the information from the assessment to help them discuss and navigate that situation. I'm just trying to figure out what, what has been agreed to at this point by whom you said over a year ago, you just talked to Ames City staff and you said we would pay for everything except Ames. Was that an agreement by the board supervisor?
Was that an agreement by the board supervisors?
That's, well, there's been no formal agreement. We're really trying to get this started here.
Okay, but I'm just trying to figure out if that was, if the board had said we Story County will pay for everything in a housing study except Ames, that's not what you're saying.
No. What we discussed is I'd originally called around, called and talked to some communities that had had housing needs. Brenda was helpful in giving me some means of that. In fact, her previous employment, what she'd done, the Mitchell County just issued a Housing Needs Assessment right before she came down there. I also called over to Iowa State University and spoke to them. It turns out that there are, there's a group of people at Iowa State University who do this also. And R E G happens to be one of the companies that do this. I managed to speak to one of the people that actually worked on the 1997 study is still around at R E G. So I got estimated prices, if you will, a price range about what this would take. And that price range included what would do for Ames they saw as to duplicate some of the items that were done in 1997, like some drive-bys and some properties to verify conditions rather than just using data. Data mining has also enhanced greatly since 1997. So I got a price, I got price goals between 16,000 and $8,000 on that. Using that, the board, the previous, previous board went ahead and we discussed about possible financial options. Then they came up about should we, what do we do with Ames? And when we're talking Ames staff, came back, found out that if we only were lending Ames in at the end, that would lower the price probably closer to 60,000. And then some additional financial data mining information I got. I'm now down to, I've received just the estimates from these experts, somewhere around 40,000. They've helped and they can do everybody but Ames and just bring Ames information in at around 40,000 to do it. So it would end up being a total Housing Needs Assessment, but most of the data will have already been collected separately by Ames and then it'll just be melted in. We're at a point now where the next step is to instruct staff. It takes the board instructing staff to create and draft RFP so that then we can get an idea if in fact even what the price range would be.
Yeah, because if that's important, it's just good. We have a ballpark that's not based on our.
Correct. It says exactly. Yes, that's it. That's, that is correct. And the board does not need to ask for one today. The board is being asked to, to step forward and instruct staff to create that draft RFP using the assistance of like John and Dustin and the resources from that old and from Ames Economic Development, Nevada Economic Development, calling maybe Mark if he got it. Been timed to talk to Leanne, et cetera, the other members of the Story County Economic Development Group and also hopefully to get some feedback from the nonprofits who are engaged in housing also. And that's once again what needs to go into the RFP, what needs to be studied because obviously dependent on what data, the narrative or anecdotal information we're interested in trying to back up with data will, will be depending on factors.
So it's basically going to be a supplement, a finance assortment, not to community by community.
Current information. Correct.
So the city of Ames, there's not an RFP there to look at because that was I did that.
I can do that.
So it's a replication with specifically for each community individually. So talking about.
I guess we'll be looking at apples to apples and I thought that would be. I called it the three components of AM where we're looking at something similar direction from the rest of the county. We are looking at more than what I can give, and that's where I come back to with the question of Ames, is for the Ames staff to put, to be putting together the comprehensive plan. They have done much deeper in the data mining and looked at the, there are the different issues also. So it would be, yes, the ICA information, but we're going to be getting information directly from Ames staff itself that would be in addition to the ICA information. The ICA information, when you look at it, is, has some statistical information on Ames and some decisions can be made from it. But this report from 1997, and I hope that's what we will be able to duplicate, is a report that looks at what are the other factors involved and what is the future heading forward? Or what are the projections about need going on? Where ICA is much more around the, just the present about number of high housing units and the cost of income, et cetera, to afford those housing needs. So it would be ICA plus for Ames, but Ames staff has that information from putting together their comprehensive plan and also the report that Vanessa Baker-Ladmore has to do as a result of her being her housing expert and filing reports with HUD. Dustin, do you have a comment?
No, I can just say, just, I think what your question is, is if you're looking at different processes for data collection, how will those plans talk to another?
Right. Does that return? Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm looking more, I'm really looking at apples to apples of that collection of that data and looking across county then, we've got to use the current housing standard.
I'm sure your planning development staff are probably the experts here on this kind of thing. But I'm assuming that the plans, even if they're not the same in terms of data collection process and methods and so forth, that they can still, there's still ways for those plans. So there's not used to talk to one another.
And that's what the RFP would be also for, I mean, as Leanne's putting together the RFP, would be if we want apples to apples, you know, how closely we want to get to apples and apples. And, and, you know, Leanne's background makes her, I think, very, very well qualified to write this in addition to being the staff technical report support, you know, for the Story County Economic Development. But that's part of what we want to put in the RFP, is what exactly do we want to do, you know, who we want interviewed and what influence we want.
And I would certainly advise you used to be conscious of what other areas around this are doing so that as you're drafting this RFP, as you're really looking at that and trying to get as close as possible to those developments.
Yeah, because I decided a lot of them are later, you're looking at the economic development of policies as well a bit. I've been talking to a little man here since I've been getting there. They've got the vision, they know what's going on in the local communities as well. One of the things that happened, discussed by previous board has to do with even Leanne, in, in the RFP, one of the items to get part of the bid on is to work this, to decide what type of leadership team would be assembled to direct him going forward for the, the study. And the study for 1997 had 24 members on the committee, right, Mark?
Three.
Okay. And so some of the feedback that I just received anecdotally was 170 people on natural steering committee. And, stop. Sorry. That's the way I used to do it. So that's a good question, Lisa. You know, we've been able to talk about this. The development of the draft RFP is where we put all that in. That, you know, you and work to deter, with working staff to determine what the number of, we, that Economic Development Group, to determine how many people would be on, how should the people be appointed on the steering committee? That the county itself would not, the supervisors would not be driving this. And after it gets going, there would be a steering committee that would look at.
I'm just thinking about a study, research questions and a study would answer. And I think this has been very clearly outlined in the RFP. Your study and the rigorousness of your study is only going to be as good as what you ask for in that RFP.
Correct.
So I'm looking at Leanne right now and thinking, you know, I know you have a lot of expertise here, but are you thinking about some expertise you would bring in to help draft an RFP? What kind of expertise would you need to have? Have a look at you.
Royden? Leanne Hunter. That's a good question. Obviously, the parties I've already mentioned, I'm going to be part of my eyes and the vows, all the ideas of some colleagues at Iowa State as well, your extension. I do have long history with a professional life, so I bring a lot of that knowledge as well. But it's not, it's not just one set of eyes that develop standards, but given the number of.
So you could think of a small group, you could work for them if you get the RFP.
So, so if you go back to, just like I said, the board, the next communication here, there's an article that I might be able, that the board is not doing, there's some divisions I need to bring from the board. This is essentially following that process and concept. Because I can deal with the board supervisors, the board instructions, staff. I'm just now a little bit more of a development review committee. And what I see happening is those individuals that are finding assistance interacting with RFP would then be part of the review committee as well, that are reviewing proposals and forward any, and forward proposals to the board. So ask them for a kind of shout.
Questions for you?
None. After my questions.
No questions?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for John or Dustin before we?
Heather, do you have any special comments to make or?
No, I'm just saying we don't have to be with our assistants.
I think it's been suggested that we direct Leanne and Story County Economic Development Group to work on RFP, present to the board, ceremony.
I believe that we direct Leanne Hunter and, well, and other, we really can't direct this directly. We do a hundred. Leanne Hunter to work with various stakeholders and people she considers experts to create a draft, a request for proposals compatible to creating a Housing Needs Assessment. Okay. I, Leanne, I know I'm asking, excuse me while I put this motion on hold to see if I can just shut the connection. Yeah. Oh, second. Okay. Yes, yes. All right. So Leanne, who said that you already had this sublin in your mind for a timeline? So you give us the timeline here, here in the board.
One of your items on today's agenda is for rural area, so that will wrap up this fall, October. So in my work program, I have this idea of developing RFP starting around September, November, October. So I've, if the board would like to give direction, since you don't officially have a work program in 60 days or whatever, so I have an idea to when it needs to come back. I can communicate that as well to those that are asking for assistance.
Yeah, me, I, I'm going to go November 15th. That's, I did it earlier. I'm going to go November 15th for plenty of time for me.
We ended to have a draft by November 15th. Any other discussion? Long favor.
I.
Hi. We're in, thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Now we're going to consideration events, but also creating an entertaining motion.
All right.
And I, also I.
Or an I.
Okay. Consideration of personnel actions as listed at the entertaining motion.
I saw.
Go ahead.
I saw you as presenting.
All right.
Also I.
And I. Personal actions as listed. Now, consideration of claims.
I saw you as presenting.
All right. Also I. And I. Looking at I. Thank you. Now we're going to consent agenda. I will entertain a motion for a consent agenda. All items is listed.
I'll move that you can consent agenda.
And I, also I. Looking at I. Consent agenda. We're going to have a hearing items and the first one is a consideration of orders number 24, amending certain boundaries to the official zoning plan. And there's also a resolution on the 20 dash issue, C2C future land use map amendment. How we'd like to do this, I mean, is we have some public hearing items. We'll have a staff report. Then we'll have a public hearing for comments. And then it was a public hearing, we can have a discussion among board members. So.
Okay. So this is a rezoning for the Roland Veterinary Clinic.
And then, did you use that?
This. Got it. They are currently on agricultural and they are planning to, is on half of their property where the veterinary clinic is located, to A2 agriculture business, which also requires the C2C future land use map amendment from the rural residential area to the commercial industrial area. Here's a large new map. You can see this star is on the intersection of 130th and 59th where the property is located. We are at a quarter of a mile west of Roland and near Story City as well. Closer view of the property. It's mainly our agricultural parcels that are adjacent. There are three dwellings within a quarter mile. The closest is over 600 feet from the clinic building. You can see a better view of the city of Roland here as well. The closest portion of the city of Roland to the subject property is actually their industrial park. And there's the Roland Cemetery as well. And then the subject property is outlined in red here and it's the west half that's being proposed to be rezoned. So the east half contains the dwelling where the doctor and his wife live. They are not proposing to rezonate that will remain on agricultural. Okay. So this veterinary clinic has been in location since 1996 and was originally approved through a home business permit. The rezoning is before you today because the home business has really expanded past what is allowed under the requirements for a home business. There's four full-time staff members and six part-time staff members. There's 16 clients today, including for commercial boarding of animals, including dogs and cats. That's going to be a separate conditional use permit for boarding. And the work adjustment will have until tomorrow. And then the current doctor, Dr. Robinson, is a small and large animal veterinarian, which is important as we're considering this agriculture business sign district. So the closest large animal practices are in Hutter, Redwood, Malhorn, and Jefferson, and of course Iowa State University. But as a result, there's a really great need for this large animal practice in Story County. So it's an important part of supporting our various agricultural operations. Here are a few site photos. This is looking south on 130th, which is a paint road. Again, 130th, this is the dwelling. So east begins agricultural, there's a tree left for a guy that's been spreading for the agricultural parcels. And this is a barn that's used for large animal treatment. This is the main clinic building. Some resigning standards approval. I will go through the first briefly. The first standard is that the rezoning shall conform to this C2C plan, or comprehensive plan. And that's why they are requesting an amendment to the C2C plan. So if that amendment's granted, they will conform to the C2C plan. The property shall also conform to the statement of intent for the A2 district. That statement of intent is that it should be for activities strongly interrelated with agricultural uses, which is something a large animal veterinarian definitely gives. Also, we're not taking any land out of agricultural production leases for or the agricultural values for the property is low. And so we're not impacting any high value agricultural lands with this rezoning. The proposed rezoning shall be compatible with surrounding land uses. We do have a major, a major part of the Jason Land uses are agriculturally used as, but it. We do have a major part of the Jason Land uses are agriculturally used, but again, we are pretty close to the city of Roland and located on a paved road on 130th, high levels of traffic. So there will, we are in a rural area, a large animal veterinary practice supports that rural area, there is infrastructure in place such as a median road to support more commercial uses, and we are located near the industrial park in the city of Roland, so it is a good location. The proposed rezoning shall not include environmental resources, there's none on the property. And then, of course, there's a standard for leases score, it has to be below 267, which it is. Moving on to the C2C future land use map standards of approval. The first is that if the C2C plan amendment is consistent with comprehensive planning goals and policies, and these are really similar to, you know, the standards for rezoning looking at, are we compatible with agricultural areas? And if it's commercial development, does it make sense to have that commercial development in a rural area? And so again, staff included that is a case for this rezoning. Again, this has established the commercial use since it located with the subject property for 23 years. So nothing new. And then, evidence why the plan should be changed is the second standard. So for this, we look at, did we miss something when we created the C2C plan? Why wasn't this designated commercial in the first place? Well, the tax classification of the property isn't delivered as residential right now, and so that to allow the property is something that should be designated commercial in the C2C plan. The assessor's office did note that that would be changed, given the use of the property, and that's completely communicated with the advocate. Whether or not the change is needed to allow reasonable development, again, this is permitting existing use of the property. The relationship of the proposed amendment to supply and demand, but particularly if used within the county and a median vicinity, and the demonstration that the proposed amendment has merit beyond the interest of the advocate, then this all comes back to the need for small and large animal veterinarians in Story County to support our rural areas. And finally, possible impacts and all specific elements of the comprehensive plan. Really, my point is already, and the consideration of physical impacts, 130th is paved, so we're not creating any issues of traffic on gravel roads. Comments? We did round this to animal control and answered a few of their questions as well, to other county departments, just to make sure that the kennels were inspected by the state back then. The cities of Roland and Story City were notified, neither had any comments. The role of the city council actually took action to support the rezoning as well. We sent notice letters to property owners if they had one on it, and they had a sign on the property. We did have one inquiry about what the rezoning was about from one adjacent property owner, and we did also publish in three newspapers, conservative newspapers. So these are all your alternatives. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a rule on both the C2C plan amendment and the rezoning. They didn't have any discussion to share with you or comments or questions. And so you may take action on the C2C plan amendment separately, and then take action on the rezoning and set the second hearing of the rezoning as part of that action, if you wish. Any questions? I'm ready.
Are you suggesting the resolution actually or ministry?
I don't think the order matters, but you don't need to have a second reading of the resolution.
Okay, that's very thoughtful.
So I think Shelley's language is better, right?
Resolution. Okay. Do you, did you have any questions?
None.
Then I'll open the public hearing, if there are any comments from the public.
Rollin City Council is excited about their presence and supports us.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, then, if not, our close public hearing, I'll move, and I'll entertain motion on the resolution.
I move approval of resolution 20 dash oh two, the C2C future land use map amendment for the Roland Veterinary.
A second. Any further discussion? Olsen? I. Bergen, I. Resolution is drafted next to the motion ordinance.
I move approval of first consideration of ordinance number 284, amending the certain boundaries of the official zoning map of Story County and set the second consideration for August 27th.
Two seconds. A second. Any further discussion? Olsen? I. Bergen, I. Okay, very much. Do you want to go on now to the next item?
Sure. I think Sharon can start off.
Good morning.
Move the mic, please. Sharon.
The stormwater ordinance, emergency control ordinance, was initiated by staff based on situations that occurred back in 2017. There's a few different situations that I'm really actually going through. But we realized real quickly that our current ordinance wasn't equipped to address some of those situations, and so we started to look at the ordinance pretty closely. We started to reach out and try to get a good grasp as to what other cities and counties' regulations were regarding stormwater, emergency control. We learned a great deal from those entities. And that led into us reaching out to a number of stakeholders. We talked about it several times, environmentalists, engineers, developers, builders, property owners with an interest in this issue have been involved in this process all along. And then that transition into a focus group that was created in April, and it provided a great deal of focus for us. We also took input when we brought this amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the July 10th meeting. We received some very good input from a couple of engineers who attended, and we reviewed those comments, went back to the drawing board, so to speak, and discussions with the cities, with the counties who have adopted regulations, reached out to other organizations to get a better grasp of, you know, how to respond to some of these comments. I'll leave this going through now in greater detail in a few moments, but there were 12 items that were addressed at the July 10th meeting, and of those, we amended where we could, either of those. We're holding on for those items. So the current ordinance is pretty limited. The emergency control provisions, they talk about certain items that could be installed for developments under an acre. With regard to the stormwater ordinance section, it's pretty limited, and that it just references the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual, best man practices. It doesn't call up for specific guidelines, so that engineers, property owners who are working on improvements to their properties doesn't provide that detail that's needed, nor does it require a Iowa licensed construction engineer to do the design. So our goal all along has been to improve and provide clarity in the current ordinance, and again, base it on information from cities and counties that have similar regulations. And also, our ordinance is heavily rooted in, based on input that we've received from the stakeholders and from that public group. I'd like to thank Amelie for taking this project on, she's been working on it for a long time, and for embracing this process, and we're excited to have this ordinance.
Thanks, Jerry. Okay, so as Jerry said, we started this in May of 2017. We had a couple of issues come forth. One was natural arrobit, and we did not have any requirements, and the county and the state did not have any requirements for that arrobit. We also had several issues where single-family dwellings were constructed, not part of the subdivision, but property owners graded the entire lots, which caused damage to ditches, costing taxpayers money. Property owners adjacent neighbors who farmed also had a recognized air property of these issues, and our ordinance for emergency control was not equipped to deal with and ameliorate those issues. For stormwater, we also had a new subdivision where we had a present concern from adjacent subdivision property owners that it was causing erosion. And again, our ordinance wasn't equipped to really require any volume or other controls of that stormwater runoff, but it did resolve potentially constructed. And then, we also had the watershed assessment, which I know you all are familiar with, and that really solidified our concerns as well. As part of the assessment, EOR, who was the consultant, completed a review of our stormwater and erosion control ordinance, since they described the erosion control requirements as inadequate, and they described our stormwater management requirements as vague, they lack precision, that creates confusion, inconsistent interpretation, ineffective application, which is something, that's what we were seeing. So to summarize the proposed changes, for land disturbance activities that are under one acre in size, that is what our proposed erosion control ordinance focuses on. If you're over one acre in size, the state of Iowa has a permit that you would need to work with that one. And that was a piece of feedback we received, not to duplicate what they're already doing. So as part of the requirements, we would propose that there are temporary and final stabilization of site required, so seeding or having some sort of temporary cover of a site to stop erosion from happening in the first place. There are also recommended practices to minimize an area that's an area disturbed, so encouraging property owners not to bring their entire site, to leave some vegetation in place. These are really, you know, simple practices that are very effective. You know, in the case that there is a sensitive feature on the site, or you're getting really close to the perimeter of a site, other controls may be required, but that's not being required to everyone. There are also topsoil restoration requirements proposed, so when you are removing all the topsoil from the site, you're going to have to restore it. So that would probably be more applicable to whether you have dwellings being constructed that are not part of the subdivision. You know, if you have a pole barn and you're removing topsoil because you're placing that, you know, structure in a certain area, there wouldn't be topsoil restoration required because that's necessary for the function. But otherwise, the topsoil is important for retaining moisture and providing adequate vegetation and that kind of thing, and also providing stormwater benefits. And then finally, we have proposed requirements for a stabilized construction entrance onto sites and concrete washout requirements. Concrete waste has the same pH as that of drain up, and so we really want to make sure that we have adequate requirements for when you're building, you know, a single-family dwelling in a county and you have a concrete truck come out, we want to make sure that they're using something appropriate, as well as not creating, having a bunch of sediment leave the site on vehicles, that kind of thing, and have a good entrance for those vehicles as well. For stormwater management, the criteria that we are proposing are referred to as unified sizing criteria. And so what that means is they are comprehensive, they're comprehensive criteria, so we're not just controlling for one impact that a rainfall event may have, we're controlling for an entire range of rainfall events and the range of impacts those rainfall events may have. So for smaller events, we have different impacts. So for instance, if you have a small rain event, that can really lead to polluted loading in streams versus a larger event may lead to flooding issues. And so it's really important that we take a comprehensive approach, because we have both water quality issues, I'll move on to the next slide to go through these, but we also have issues with flashy events creating erosion in our stream banks, and so it's important to have a criteria that addresses the flashy nature of Story County's streams, and that's something with the watershed assessment was hit heavily on. Another part of the smaller events would be groundwater recharge. The watershed assessment found that 8% of Story County residents rely on groundwater as their primary source of drinking water. And so, as part of the requirement for managing smaller events on site to deal with polluted loading, there's also an infiltration requirement. We didn't introduce an exception to that infiltration requirement in the case that it didn't make sense for a site, but it's a really good goal to promote Story County's groundwater resources. And then, of course, we do have proposed larger, for larger events, flood control criteria, so making sure that the post-development peak runoff rate, not just the pre-development peak runoff rate for larger storm events. And so I have a graphic of what that might look like. The tallest curve that you see on the screen is post-development runoff without flow control, so no management. And then, the smaller curves on the screen are what the peak runoff would look like, pre-development, and then post-development with controls. So you can see that the peak isn't as tall, we're not creating downstream flooding. You know, post-development with controls, it might be a larger amount of water over a longer period of time, but we're not creating this huge spike that leads to flooding issues. We did take a lot of information from model ordinances, I've summarized a few up here. You know, the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual is a manual that Iowa DNR holds, it really references that, it has a guiding document. Other counties like Johnson County, Dubuque County, and the city of Ames, the model ordinances that you know are provided for Story County's cities. But I think a really important part of this is while we use model ordinances, we also rely on outreach efforts to tailor the ordinances to Story County's. And so, we can create a considerable internal and external outreach, I'm not going to look for everything that was in the memo, but we took this to Planning and Zoning Commission a lot of times. We had multiple interagency review meetings. We had a focus group for stakeholders that was moderated. We, you know, I've gone on a radio show to talk about the ordinances, we've had press releases. We actually had a planning day last year in October for a model ordinance for this stormwater. Proposed stormwater was available for the public that came in for planning month, if you guys recall that day. So we've been working on this a long time, and as a result, we've really gotten it out yet, and gotten a lot of great feedback. So notable changes based on outreach. We've added our exception, exception based on outreach. So one of the exceptions is the maintenance of legally established development. So if you have a parking lot that you're going to be repaving on the same area, it was, you know, permitted legally under the ordinance before we adopted our stormwater management, that's what we do that, then you're exempted. I think that's an issue that we heard a lot about, especially as the city of Ames was going through and ending their stormwater ordinance recently, so that's something to put into our ordinance. We also have an exception so that the county engineer doesn't have to provide us with plans, the requirements would still apply if there was a project that fell under the thresholds, but we didn't want to bottom down and more permitting that, something we heard from our agency review. And then we have an exception for infiltration of water polyline, which I already talked about a little bit, because even hearing, we do have some unique features such as septic systems, where infiltration on a site might not be the best idea, so we've introduced an exception where we go, hey, we can't need an appropriate setback for our septic system. Can we deal with our water polyline another way? Yeah, that's okay. We also have changed the thresholds for the plans numerous times based on feedback, and I think we're in a good place now with the undermining of sediment controls. and I think we're in a good place now with the under one acre sediment controls, we're not duplicating state requirements, and over one acre for stormwater management, so we're not so restrictive, but we're also not so, have such a high threshold that we create issues downstream for cities, for instance, that have little inspections. That's a piece of feedback for seeing through a little bit of this group. And we've really had a major overhaul of erosion sediment control to make it more practical for property owners to comply with. Some of the two main parts of that that everyone would have to comply with is just minimizing disturbed area and from the area that you can disturb, having appropriate stabilization, whether it's temporary or permanent. Let's see. At the July meeting, the planning and zoning commission, like Jerry suggested, this was after our focus group, we have taken the ordinance for recommendation in action to planning zone, we received a lot of additional comments from two engineers that attended the meeting, and so we, you know, appreciating that feedback that we received. And there were 12 main areas of concern around the meeting, and we addressed eight items. The only change was the county engineer exemption. There was also a comment that staff shouldn't have compulsory language that we would be inspecting every practice, and we think that's really important. Jerry, for instance, has, through his experience in doing inspections of this kind of thing for a number of years, and I was just certified in the maintenance and inspection of stormwater practices and completed a training last week for maintenance and inspection of erosion and sediment control practices. There was also a comment that we should have a minimum threshold for my erosion and sediment controls are required. Staff really thought about this for a long time, this was something that was brought up in one of our initial interagency review meetings as well. From what we've seen on sites, it's not always dependent on the size of the disturbed area that creates erosion problems, it's determined by site characteristics. So maybe you don't have highly eroded soils, maybe you don't have slums, maybe that's an issue, but maybe you are putting up, and we've seen this, a pole building close to a property line that creates a lot of issues for your neighbors. And so we were concerned about doing this based on size versus the site characteristics. So we've really tried to take that into account in the ordinance, where we have different requirements for sites with sensitive features. And then final stabilization requirements, there was a question about if native vegetation could be used to stabilize a site permanently, and staff found that that was a practice that would be fine under the proposed requirements. We looked at some of the guidance documents on stabilization. We also changed eight areas, things were all outlined in our memo, and I talked about a few. One was that we allowed designers more flexibility in designing to what the pre-development rate was for the larger storms, so they can pick whether they wanted to design to the pre-settlement rate or for the pre-development rate of this site as it existed before the proposed development for the five-year storm rates for that, so it just allows a little bit more flexibility for designers. We clarified our buffer requirement for sensitive features for erosion control during construction, and added a lot of exceptions for activities that would be allowed in that buffer zone. Most importantly, that re-meditation and stabilization of stream banks is allowed in that buffer zone, so you can get in there and, you know, try to address any issues that are present. At the August meeting, we brought back ordinance with these changes, and there are a few commission comments. One was asking if the ordinance could be simplified. Staff feels that what the commissioner suggested was just having an engineer submit a plan that's stamped and not having any other requirements as part of the ordinance, and that could really be bringing back to where we're at now, where we don't have a set of criteria that everyone has to meet. And then there was also a question about staff reviewing the plans that were submitted. We understand that we're not going to be redesigning anything, but we do, we've worked with Johnson County and other municipalities that have these ordinance to determine what is the minimum content that should be submitted to make sure that folks are compliant, other communities, and that was something important. We also received additional public comment at the August meeting. I think I'll summarize the public comment that we received. So there was a lot of comment about simplifying the criteria for stormwater management, you know, cutting some of the requirements for smaller storm events, the water quality volume requirement, the channel protection volume requirement. Staff feels that that wouldn't be simplifying the requirements, that would be taking away from the comprehensive approach we are proposing. There was a statement at the meeting that our ordinance is adding complexity to a natural system, but staff feels that our ordinance is proposing, the goal is to replicate those natural systems that have been altered in the past through agricultural production or have been, will be further altered by a proposed development. And so we feel that it's important to have this comprehensive approach that other communities can take, and that's recommended by most of all of the guidance documents we've referenced, that was recommended in the water shed study, and I just talked to the urban conservationist from Hope County, and the Des Moines Metro this fall will be working so that all municipalities adopt the unified sizing criteria in the metropolitan area. So this is something that we're ahead of even from the metro, so we've found that it's very important to have all of the criteria for stormwater management. You know, there was a comment that this creates complexity for designers, especially for maintenance for property owners down the road, and we did introduce a maintenance provision within the ordinance, so there has to be a maintenance one submitted. And then there was also a comment that maybe this wasn't applicable for rural areas. We have reached out to professionals and asked this question, because that's something we would absolutely, you know, want to know is staff, if this wasn't applicable to rural areas. That was not a comment that came up with the focus group, that this wasn't applicable to rural areas, especially when we have, you know, this is the area of commercial development over a acre, it's creating a lot of mortgage services, or a major subdivision. And in this Iowa Stormwater Management Manual, which we reference designers to follow, they do allow designers to account for site-specific features and the features of their water shed. And so rural watersheds function differently than urban watersheds, and one of the professionals we reach out to noted this, having that a designer could account for hydrological differences in a rural area versus an urban area when they're doing their designs. Staff also just wants to note that the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual is currently being updated, and so that will, we talked to a person on the committee that's made up of, you know, folks from the Iowa DNR, and consultant engineers, schools, and universities, and they're going to be rolling out new guidance on implementing the unified sizing criteria and design control criteria, as well as new guidance on best management practices, so hopefully that will help any issues in the Stormwater Management Manual that designers have seen. So that's a process that's currently ongoing. That won't create any issues to the quality of our ordinance, because we just referenced to follow the guidance in the Stormwater Management Manual, so when it's updated, folks, we must follow the new guidance. And we also finally reached out to county engineer after the August meeting to discuss any potential incompatibilities with the ordinance in Greenwich Districts, and they did not identify any concerns. So for that, at the August 7th meeting, the planning and zoning commission made a motion to recommend approval, which failed due to lack of support, the vote was two to two. So staff does recommend approval of the ordinance, it's based on professional information and guidance, as well as public feedback, and story county-specific experiences and assessments. And we will actively be involved in the ordinance's implementation and plan to continue outreach with the public and stakeholders if it is a purpose. I have the ordinance in the PowerPoint, if you want to go through the whole hit or any areas, it is up to you.
She summarized it.
I summarized major parts, but...
Do you want to say the eighteen ones? No, thank you for being seated, we gotta get to the top. You did a good job summarizing, thank you. And splitting it out into the separate PDFs, so someone has to read it back. Do you have any questions up in the air, Jerry? Anything for me, or for the public here? This is a public hearing now, so the public hearing on this diverse consideration ordinance is not too late on.
What do you want? Scott Noh, Fox and Jerry, come on and on this several times. It's not that I'm opposed to this upgrade of the ordinance, in fact, I'd be a favorite of that, but I also believe in things that are simple and work every time versus things that are overly complicated in a fair way. And my comments are would be insane, whether we're in the city, whether we're in the county, the how are they in the county, specifically kind of fail with some of the requirements. A lot of these comments came from me, and so I'm telling people separately, but really the erosion control, everything that we're gonna get talking about, everything is already in the, is already in the safety permit requirements, there's references to new things, developing understanding, but I, yeah, duplicating that. When you duplicate it, that means that that changes state side, that will change, that will pass a change in the county side, I don't think there's really that. I don't have a problem with, so county doing inspections, we have a problem with having that inspection from jury didn't agree with, so they turned it over to the state, and the state came out, and honestly, that became that because we were really wrong, so. What Jerry wanted me to do is going to make more erosion not less, and so I refused to do those. But that, if county wants to do inspections, I'm fine with that, but we have to understand and we tailored this ordinance towards the developer and overall, and my, eighty percent of my problems on subdivision to do home builders not doing that ratio. Now, property has, at that point, transacted, the developer has really no, very little influence over the home builder. The home builder may not even be the person that owns the property, they're the person that had or is delivering property or somebody else. We have very little control over that, and so if you're going to do this, apply it well, but I think really you need to focus a little bit more on the home builder than you want to do the erosion control, because that's where I see things fall apart. When we go out and make comments and we'll comment back to those people, we really don't have any teeth, because one teeth for it, because you have some other questions. So I thought I had to say up there.
So I do have a question here, just to be clear here. All right, so you're saying that this ordinance is focused on what the developer does, but not on the individual home builder, but the home builder buys or options those lots from the developer, correct? So the developer can require it as a, as a part of the sale or the option for the sale.
Well, you should be doing that, but really when it comes to having teeth to do something, there's teeth for it. You have somebody that's selling lots, wanting to sell lots, and somebody that wants to buy lots, there's not a relationship there that says, you know, you mess with the system, well, you gotta fix it.
But does the county have to keep, the county can deny the permit or open command, correct?
Well, that's what I'm saying is, there needs to be more focus in this ordinance on the home builder itself versus the developer itself, not you.
Amanda, did you hear?
Yes, so again, thank you. The erosion control ordinance is focused on development under one acre in size, so a lot of the time, the developer's not going to be involved with a development under that in size. It would be an individual homeowner, it would be somebody that would come in for their permit with us, at which point we would communicate the requirements with them, so we would be working a lot of the time with home builders. Because with a large development where a developer may be involved, that would still be under the state's permit, and again, we're not, our erosion control and sediment control ordinance does not apply to developments over one acre in size or over, where over one acre is disturbed.
Because there are already, there's a different mechanism in place, correct?
Mistake, yes, yeah.
So that's where we lost, thank you for letting me know.
Yeah, and I understand what she's saying, and again, what I'm really asking for is to simplify that. And then the other part that I have a problem with this is, is you also put no name, which means every time there's a complaint, and if you want to do that, that's fine, but most towns have some sort of limit, Kings has a half acre limit, and that doesn't preclude any action that takes place, we still have nuisance completely related to race, I guess. I'm not certainly, what I'm a little concerned about here is, I'm pretty sure we're getting a whole one immediately, we might have a, we might have issues with the, 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 with That's an entirely different problem, so we have a much more diffuse, uh, stormwater behavior system in place already. One of the reasons I want the county engineer to have to do, uh, stormwater management, maybe as a review, is for him to live under the same constraints. You're asking for the developer to have extra cost, but again, county is not to encourage extra cost to follow the rules, I don't quite understand that. And part of that is, when we've looked at solutions, the county road system is entangled in that design. That's a separate set of design requirements that are really kind of in conflict with the stormwater. There's some things that we can do there, and if we're not doing it, it depends on the county, there's other requirements. So what we're doing is, really, what we talked about before is, if that concentrate the flow that the county engineer is requiring, and then in turn, I would have to deal with it. I don't, I don't think that's necessary in terms of making arrangements together. To that end, I'd like the county engineer to have to deal with this, and I think we'll get some solutions from him, and perhaps I will get workshops of those solutions right through. So that's why I want the county engineer involved.
Thanks, Scott, except for that, we, Jerry, just answer that.
So the requirements apply to county engineer, the concern was especially with her, you can control how you just commit extra paintwork every time he goes in to clean out a ditch of permit, right?
Every time, you know, you're trying to dish them out.
Right, because we don't have a minimum threshold requirement, and so there was a big concern that they're gonna get logged down if every time they have to submit a grade document, whatever they did for. I also think that a lot of the work that county engineer does is on drainage districts, um, and so, that's really for agricultural purposes, and our zoning code can, um, enforce on agricultural purposes, right?
Yeah, and I'm not talking about either of those situations. One is maintenance, maintenance is allowed under lots, and it's just a general allowance. And then the second part is drainage systems, which honestly, you know, I'm a new expert, drainage stuff, drainage system is a problem. Drainage district laws, you're only predates everything else, it's hard to go with, it doesn't apply kind of that business. So in general, which is true, it's agricultural, and as long as we're going back to this stormwater, we know, we know, we know. We still hasn't, hasn't, of course, the state works for shore management, so it's covered, but when you're working in water and cleaning out, it's a real sketchy figure, obviously, you know, it's turned the water pretty bad.
And of course, um, Darren, we have to get state permit too, if he's working in water or doing a lot of pressure, so.
So really, my comments are more between the city, and whether the county's doing a design and a home for roads, and also evaluating the road system that we're giving to them to evaluate, because, because let us have some ability to do some little bit stormwater things within the county, in the county roads. Which perplexes me a little bit because all of the elements I'm doing of late is the roads are to county standard, but they're private roads, they don't belong to the county. We have to maintain them, we have to snow them, we have to eliminate them, and yet we have to see this kind of behavior part of this that we have to meet, so. To me, yes, uh, that, that's where I see it.
And I'd like to comment. I don't see a conflict there, we're, we are, have the ability to legislate to the quality of construction standards that we want to see any road that a member of the public is traveling on, even if the road is not private, there's gonna be access by members of the public. I don't think that there's a problem with us demanding a minimum standard, but that's what I heard you say, maybe I was a bit.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not, I'm not debating the minimum standards, I'm fine with that. What I'm saying is there's smaller management components of the city roads and county road system that are in conflict with what we want to do for, for stormwater management. For example, is by, this is, uh, by county and state law both, that, um, we have designed commerce capacity to be repaired. Well, okay, well, that means I let water concentrate within areas of ban instead of having it somewhere else in the water source. We have huge ditches, uh, that we can use for storage and other purposes, but we're not doing that. And so, there's some, I think inherent cause of that. You know, and I'm fine with dealing with content, I'll lay out what's different, why I'm doing it, but part of my purpose here is not to really, I don't want at this point to establish a rules, I understand where it's been, where it's coming from, I'm just putting on notice all the things that I have, I see as problems. Been doing this for thirty years, and then, I'm the old guy that, that knows where all these, all this, all this math came from, and how it works. Uh, I know line of reader programs, and I know how it's supposed to work and where it came from, and what it's supposed to do, and I just see an abuse of this. I especially see the abuse of the unified criteria, um, because I don't think it's gonna function like people think it's gonna function. You're mostly going to develop a system that's gonna be pretty long-term.
The system will fail?
Yeah, the system will fail.
Batch will mechanical, what we're talking about here is stormwater system.
Yeah, a couple of ways to look at this is, first of all is, I don't believe in doing anything on my own self. In other words, an individual property owner should not be doing any of these improvements. Because one property owner who buys it, first guy probably understands what they're supposed to do, we have a, uh, rain guard in the back of their yard that we're gonna maintain and take care of. The next person comes, goes back there and says, that shit means, and I won't know that. And it's gonna be hard for the county to maintain that, so to my mind is, individual lot systems should be discouraged. I'm not saying we can't do them, but they should be discouraged, because, and done as, where the homeowners association is taking care of a larger system. Because I think it's more effective long-term than, than some of these other systems. The stormwater drainage amount has what I call a trendy stuff in it, and, and it has its applications in certain places, but it rolls subdivisions. And from what I see is failures, um, I'm not certain we're gonna do it. I'm starting to get calls within the last two or three years, that somebody seems to get implemented, that I'm getting calls because EMPs are. And I refuse to take all of the suits because, from my standpoint, if somebody asks me, I'm gonna say, well, they're, they're, that's the thing. All these systems are gonna fail in some ways, some, uh, some way, you just wanna figure that. When it does happen, it's in a manner that doesn't create havoc for everybody else. If you do things on lots, then you're gonna create systems that create havoc for everybody else. If you do it as a downstream, last river, last thing that goes off the facility, or as a homeowners association responsibility, it's more likely to, or less likely to fail because it's kind of designed to handle, uh, a variety of events.
I, you talk about homeowners associations, how did we govern homeowners associations?
That's a really good question, um.
I don't see that as anything that I, that's a hall of charity as far as I can see.
Yeah, so, let's, let's differentiate between covenants and what homeowners association responsibilities, because covenants expire, right? They all have a twenty-three year life. But homeowners associations stick around forever, have certain responsibilities, usually property and company. So, in the county ordinance, you require fifteen percent green space as part of your, uh, development, right? Most often, the way that you've done one to accomplish those is if you back around the company, you know, you know, try to add on individual lots, just because, I think it's called to control individual lots. Who, if you plant it in priority on fifteen percent of the lot, it's gonna stay, it's open up, it's, well, I don't like that, I'm gonna do that now. So we put those in common areas where they won't be attached, and they're, they're forever. So the homeowners association is, is, is almost a given, no matter what you, what you're doing, because you're gonna end up with this fifteen percent green space.
I asked about how do you, and they regulate what our homeowners association would do, because we're talking about county ordinance.
Right.
And what authority the county can, that's the question.
Sure, so to go to that though is, now you're moving into the next step when you're planning some stormwater facilities, right? To me, the logical place to apply that is, is with the homeowners association, not with individual property owners.
Amelia, James, can you say that?
Yep, um, that's why we require a maintenance plant to be submitted.
And again.
So that they can, they want to be responsible.
And again, from the maintenance plant standpoint, you want it to be, you gotta see, everything that, that she, that did down here, I'm gonna work around. You make it work for me, I'm not worried about me, I'm worried about people are gonna come in and, and think that we're gonna do something here that's, that's good for the county, and I don't think it's going to. The other part of this is, um, what is coming, um, you have a couple of initiatives going on, there's this squaw creek watershed, um, where's that required?
Management.
Management, right, so I read through all the requirements of that, uh, which I think is a big thing. Um, however, if I'm working, if I'm doing developments next to the squaw creek, what you're gonna end up with is I'm gonna, I'm gonna fulfill the development's requirements and not do anything that helps the squaw creek improve as a whole. Which I think in most cases I'd rather do, and accomplish really two things at once, take care of my development and then take care of some of the, the things that are going on with the squaw creek management.
And the kind of broader here, let's stick to specifics of the ordinance, right? Are there things the ordinance wants specifically, county and county?
Just let me review my notes here.
And there's a, I have a question, is just a biggest department statement I can, I would, or we got?
What's your question? Okay, in the last, on page ten of the staff report, last paragraph, you said that this was a, that these comments will use the staff please if, if they're not stopping, but it says regarding both stormwater and eroded erosion control, the engineer commented that they would not communicate as soon as the, I don't know, changes in their plans to staff is required by proposed ordinance. Is that accurate, what was said?
Yeah, exactly what I was saying. Because what we do on these systems is, is, these are complex systems, and how they work is not always predictable. For example, uh, Williams County in this case is an example, we built a couple for anger detention pond, initially developed with, and we have a county tile that drains into it. Honestly, you do not know how many acres the county tile, because it could be ten acres, it could be a hundred and fifty, somewhere in between. How that inputs into this pond fluctuates how the pond's gonna work. And so we've already modified how that pond works, and, and really what we're gonna respond to, what people downstream are asking to do, is how we're gonna implement those changes. And we've done that on both those seven ponds, that, or both those drainage ponds that, that here in this state, we've already modified them.
But why would it be the ordinance that's saying modify, you know, let the county know?
No, it's, it's, that's not the way the ordinance is written, the ordinance is written, I believe that we have to give permission when we're handling a change. You're just asking for updating information, like you would ask for, if a zone member submitted, and your change is made, you'd be able to get updated information so that our owners can.
And if, what you asked, can you do the next step, Jerry, what if that information that comes that you're gonna update indicates there's now a problem?
We're gonna have to address it.
Okay. So, you, so you were asking for updating, but if, if in fact what is being updated is causes a new problem, then, then Scott, ordinance has to be approved. That's very clearly our idea, okay?
I understand that, I'm just saying, and we modify these things relatively frequently, almost fifty percent of these things, we modify how we operate within the first, first three, three calls.
So you're gonna say, forget it, if, if this.
I don't want to modify, I just don't want your permission to do it.
Well, I do love the example. Okay, so Jerry said his request on application, it's only goes out of compliance because of that, that has to be addressed, uh, Jerry? Or is it not fine, not even permission? But I, I think your Scott's point about if, if the change creates a problem that therefore the permit without amount, or whatever it is here, I adhere that it has to be addressed. I'm just more interested in that, uh, or concerned about, we started with, you say, Scott, this is gonna fail, and we, and then I've got a staff report specifically coming, you know, and you just won't do it. And so I'm concerned then about all of the comments you've given lately.
Mr. Reddell, thank you much for your comments, let me see, are there any other members in the public who wish to comment on your proposed ordinance? If not, then I will close the program here. Any, any discussion? I just, I mean, I think there were several questions, like the product, I think, at the same time, there are concerns for our, for our. Someone's looking at, you know, seventy, over, or, or, I mean, this, this happens.
Well, well, I wanna thank, um, Mr. Reddell, Scott, for coming forward, coming to all the meetings, and consistently, um, all the many years I've, I've known and listened to testify, Scott is always interested in creating, trying to find as many bugs as he thinks will be in the man's. And there are a lot of people who aren't that way, who don't care enough, so thank you for that, Scott, that, that, you know, you're willing to come forward and do that. I also, though, know, as I get older, that nothing's perfect, I'm always reminded of that. And so, it sounds like that we have had one of the most extensive vetting processes over a two-year-plus period, and when I went through this, the stakeholders, I do see several other engineers there, so. And we know, it's like any profession, that there's a wide suite of practice, and people see different things at different times, and so, um, so I, I feel some comfort here that while some of what you have to say may come true, and we are giving modifications down the road, so this has been very thoroughly, very, um, by stakeholders on both sides. Um, it has changed from the original draft several times to allow full public input. Um, ideally, you know, we need the, with the always want your public input, lots of transparency, everything should go through this, but we never get anything done. Okay, so, so I thank you, the staff, for the efforts you've gone through, and thank you, Scott, for going through the process and pointing out where, don't be surprised if someone is mainly tweeting or talking about.
I would also like to comment on length of time and the input that staff got in high ash, it was not on the order that started. I was a member of planning and zoning commission when this was added to our plan. And I also, it was, um, being in on the beginnings of it, at that time, I did sit in on the focus group, there were several people, there was a wide variety of input, and I've heard a lot of positives about the steps the county's taking, and as you pointed out, it's also in our watershed assessment that we needed to make improvements. So as well as seeing, I'm from planning and zoning commission member, and seeing some of the issues that were coming up, that came in front of, came in front of us there. I've seen along all the work that you've done, and I attended some of the meeting, planning and zoning commission meetings as well. And I have seen that when you've been given recommendations, you've been seriously to change that, we've made a lot of modifications. I don't, you know, I don't doubt this is a perfect document, you know, as somebody says to me often, let not perfect, perfect be the enemy of the good. I think we have a good approach here, and just from seeing how many you, the input you've gotten, and how you've dealt with it, I am sure that when we need to improve this ordinance, that staff will be coming to us and saying, we have got something we need, we need to add to, we need to strengthen this, and it's for, you know, soil quality, water quality, all the things that are mentioned here in Story County. And I would say one more thing, we are doing a lot of development in the incorporated areas of Story County. The Story County Board has approved zoning changes, and changes that have allowed residential development outside of the incorporated areas. I think it's our responsibility, we're allowing development to this extent, that we have good standard regulations to protect our soil and our water, and, and our citizens' investments, residents' investments, as they build out in the county. So I wanna thank everybody, you know, Scott, and I wanna thank you for your input on that, and staff and everybody else who's gone, who's been part of this process. I think it's a very good beginning. Scott, so, well, I saw your ten motion.
Okay, I approve of first consideration of ordinance number two thousand five, committing chapter eighty-five point oh eight, through the definitions in chapters eighty-eight point oh five. Environment and natural resources ordinance award for story water management and loading and sediment control, story county's land development regulation. Story County's whole departments and section consideration for August seventh, twenty nineteen.
I second that.
Is there any further discussion?
Um, I have two comments. One is, um, I am a little disappointed that due to the exemption on egg buildings, um, it doesn't, we aren't able to apply some of this, um, uh, to the same management practices, but there's always things that we can refer to in the future, and the second is, um, I'm hoping that, um, Mr. Reddell, Scott, that, um, as we go forward and you work with this, that you provide feedback, um, to the county, to the staff, and to us, um, uh, to let us know if there are in fact, um, um, issues on that. But I know the staff will be keeping track also, but it's important to know, you know, how is this, it's a significant piece of county legislation.
Edmonds, I.
Also, I.
Or can I? Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna ask if you can take from, uh, your, uh, twelve fifteen, that twelve eighteen. So the twelve fifteen, that twelve eighteen.
I'm back over here again. Question, anywhere or anyone who I'd asked, have the statistics from that last owner as a countywide, how's that? Yeah, like just like some numbers and stuff, just like a try to change. Okay.
Okay, we're going to back into session for agenda on fourteen additional items, and Jerry wants to talk about the convention.
Planning Development Department is respectfully requesting to extend our current internship program. Currently, the board funds a program that's primarily operated in summer months, usually about the middle of May through first of August. And so we're requesting to extend it, anyone from ten to fifteen hours, into the fall, into the spring, to expand that, provide more opportunities for the interns, which provide a tremendous amount of assistance to the planning staff, which hopefully helps the citizens of Story County. So we looked at trends the last three years, and we have issued over five hundred zoning permits. Permits for single-family homes, additions, debt expenses, et cetera. And we had, have also upwarded close to a hundred and eighty zoning case applications that we reviewed. So our department's responsible for a work program, which is derived from our meeting with the planning zoning commission and the board toward the end of the year. We assist citizens who come in and talk to us about proposed improvements, emails, phone calls. We review property research applications, property owners who feel interested in certain properties, they want to follow certain activities on them, takes some time. Typically use our GIS system to do land evaluation site assessments, to determine whether these properties are uncut and productive, or if they're able to commit other uses. Get actively involved, and use a fringe plan request, as you know, annotations, vacations, flood plan permit applications, agricultural exemptions, home businesses. We shepherd the conceptual review process, which relates to the zoning case applications that it's submitted. Home business permit applications, and the list goes on. We also staff the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, and we have duties with the nine-month-old work group, as well as the real estate group, the work group and others. So just with regard to the work program, we have twenty-three items that we're working on. We have a deadline of the end of August. We are working hard on those things, we've completed a few of them. We also have some responsibilities that are going to be coming up in the strategic plan, the twenty eighteen through the twenty twenty-three strategic plan, as well as the watershed, the location matrix our department has identified in there, for having assignments and responsibilities. All those things, we organize and we schedule and administer. I think our program, our internship program is respected, and I think students are talking about it. The list of applicants, I think, has grown over the last few years. And I think in general, our internships, whether it be planning development, our interns with the outreach, our HR, they know that if they get a job here, they're going to take on some valuable duties that are going to hopefully ultimately translate into a job in their respective fields. So our internships are pretty active. Our interns are very active, they work on a lot of things. We want to try to help them understand what it's, to me, what it's like being a planner in the cabin. So they help with research, review zoning permits, they help with medical language and site assessments, they help update our GIS records, they attend all the meetings that we attend. And they also assist occasionally when our administrative assistant is away from her desk or on vacation. They help answer phones, help to grab traffic, which is another good set of skills to learn. So through our internship program, we have typically hired quite a few students from Iowa State University. We have hired one from the University of Iowa. But I think it's helped relationships. With Iowa State University, we were asked to participate on a committee, that that would accreditation for the community regional funding department. So we're responding with information on our relationship with Iowa State. We had interns that we've hired from Iowa State University. But again, it's a product of Iowa State University, she's a grad student, she has tremendous skills and interest in planning work. We were busy at the time, and so we were lucky enough to create a position, and she filled that position, she wanted a great job. I became interested in planning through an internship that I obtained at the City Banking, many years ago, along with senior at Iowa State University. In terms of funding, the board provides funding to the two hundred fifty, five hundred dollars. That's what we funded through fiscal year twenty. We've got about thirty-three hundred dollars remaining. And again, if an internship is, extension is supported by the board. If we look at about fourteen weeks in the fall, and twenty weeks in the spring, we would be requesting an additional thirty-one hundred dollars approximately. I think we have enough funds to get us through mid-March, with our million dollars in our budget. We probably likely need to request a budget there. And so that would be happy to answer your questions.
Questions? I guess, boy, so it looks like you currently give us a little time during the summer, is that correct?
That's what they're doing now, full-time hours, four hours a week, I'd say.
So if you had internships before, that would be ten hours per week?
This would be the first, since I've been here.
I worked during the semester ten hours.
I forgot. I'm glad she's here.
Right, you guys know me, we're previous to that. And I have an effect, I just looked at incentive for somebody, experienced the whole thing, but ten hours a week. You know, is that realistic? A lot of minutes, I was looking at here, for being a full faculty.
And then, you know, if they get hired for this summer internship, hopefully they can stay on as a chair and continue to work as long as they can.
So the ten hours, I think it works. I'm a graduate student, ten hours is what is designated for assistantships in Iowa State. And additionally, I was able to get course credit, thanks to my number of hours.
So it is reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just, I'm looking at the audience, and I know we mentioned the other other internships that we offer year-round. And I see we have Harper, who has the qualifications, or the interim annual accounting, or the paper scan. Is that related to how many, your experiences, about how many hours per week through a semester?
Um, no, sorry, I was counting how many past planning development interns I had.
Got it, okay, sorry about that. Then, should be back here, just sorry about, okay. But, so, ten hours, you said, is the same as a teaching assistant graduate. So we are actually, would be offering something competitive to a graduate student, who is most likely moving on to a graduate.
Well, we've had parents on this point, and we're having students.
Competitive or able to do both?
Any questions? Now, Jerry, no question budget.
Okay, I, my answer to that fairly tight, usually is.
It's a pretty good question. Um, I don't know if we would want to be directing a budget amendment right now. And this is, now, I think that if we just approve you expanding the internship, and then later on in the year, hopes to.
Yeah, we think we have money through property commercial.
So we won't ask for a specific budget amendment right now, just simply for this purpose, but we understand that we're making a commitment to make sure this position is fine this year.
So I would be asking, and I'm old, so I'm saying that we've approved it. So you, however, know because of the end of the year, you're invited to the same semester to be here. Is that what you want, emotionally, at this point?
Yes.
So I move that we give planning development department authority to extend an internship through the summer months, oh, sorry, through the fall and winter months, to cover ten hours.
Ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen hours through. I don't think that one should be.
Any further discussion? Watson, I, Higgins, I, Merkin, I.
I can very much agree with you.
We know you'll make the use of positions, we see you. Okay, now we'll move on to other, let's see. Current mental reports, Joe Baker is not able to be here today, he had a personal commitment, so he'll report on September tenth. So we'll move on to other reports. Discussion, direction, stamp, compile, and then that was to the urban renewal plan. Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
I thought you will take some days too. But I can see everyone, good afternoon, the monitor is not in the way. The first.
There's a presenter back there.
Especially here, the former stature, hi, behind there. The first few slides are very repetitive, I'd still like the board to see from past pages. Some guests here at the program, and I will go into the goal of this for today's meeting. Today, we're just talking about gaining some direction, giving some direction for the board to have on what to, what to do with the urban renewal plan, Story County, urban renewal area. There are three elements of our county's urban renewal program, that plan itself, chapter eight, that are called urban renewal, the code of ordinances. There are no proposed changes this year to that, especially the plan, and then economic development processes and policies. Once we get through this part of the discussion of plan, we bring back, staff will bring back that for additional direction, and possible changes to that is necessary. So just some history, the urban renewal area plan was adopted in November twenty-eleven. It follows the guidance set forth in chapter four oh three, the code of Iowa. We added in the code of ordinances section of chapter eight in two thousand and eleven again. Again, those are the locations, the properties, permission, revenues, as we generate. And the policies themselves are adopted in twenty twelve. Really does set forth standard operating procedures to come forth with applications like we are today. And the goals and objectives and strategies in the policies allow for many different types of projects. I underline letter E because that is the new one this year. So those projects are before you, if they're funded, should fall into one of these five categories. And then, again, no increment rebate grants, sold or assistance to private business. Just clarifying, technicals are not being, are not to be used for just paying direct dis, direct disbursement or rebate to private business. And that's why you see applicants being cities, we just, over that we've ordered in the past few years. And applicant is required to identify at least twenty-five percent total project cost in matching. And then, this is something you've seen again a couple times, this is the board that's, where's it occurred for the past few years. Twenty eighteen, the board did not solicit any applications, therefore you don't see any of more specific to this. That was a year of funding for to this little environment, to bring it forward. We also have a sheet in front of you, that's, that's by seventeen. That kind of gives a snapshot of all of the various programs that these county offers. But if you just want to look at the urban renewal area, that's the very first, two sets of components after the population. And you see, it's the same information that's on the screen, but there are some percentages of that. Projects funded then, also included one specific, Story County, rail train, reserver. For rail train, research extension, planning construction, the day-to-day construction, area dimensions, best come. To the revenues, I won't spend time on that because we're not changing though the bank primarily are going to intervene throughout Story County, but mostly located in northeast Story County. Available funding, as Lisa and I believe, with the Story County, I already noted, about six meaning is one hundred or seventy thousand dollars for six ten thousand five hundred dollars. That is for your consideration for this year. After all the, I won't start mentioning the name for our laws are taken out. The timeline, we did modify it slightly just because of scheduling conflicts, but roughly this, everything will be finalized by the beginning of October, November, first of each. So the applications, I have all those here, let me go through those unless you have questions because you've seen them, we've received the presentations. The goal from today's meeting is for you as an entity to set production to what projects you would like to include in the plan based on the applications. So basically determining business, apart from it's not appropriate. Your actions today, though, it's not acting to approve or deny the plans or the proposals, the applications. That will actually be when you adopt a plan. You're giving directions and you're not approving the plan. Are you not approving or disapproving on today? It's a fine line, though, if you want to clarify your action today with the plans before you have more information.
So what we've put in today is what she will bring to us and draft then later on. And I guess it's our final opportunity that we want to change. But today is really a new one. But we should, as we give information to them, from that one hundred and sixty-nine thousand and five hundred dollars. And we have, let's see, two hundred and thirty little thousand. Or that's part of the request.
And so just some history passports have funded portions of all the applications to reach that amount, have discussed each application. And in that case, it's been across the line, same percentage was funded. Some, I remember one here, some application has funded a greater percentage. Couple of years we've had a little bit of applications and in regular rounds, everything's funded. The courses, the more it's free, per year to decide whether these are necessary.
Maybe, and we don't have, as you said, there's several ways the board has approached this. Because we do need to cut down, we cannot fund everything that we announced for this year. Let me just make suggestions, if this is the first step that we would want to do. We want you to say, are there any of the applications that there's reasons to consider not funding or true, you know, causes at this point?
Um, I had asked questions with the various presenters we're here before, looking at the possibility that maybe a project or two could be considered really part of the core responsibility of the community itself as part of its infrastructure requirements. So as I look at what's left of the list, because of course Kelly was pulled out, I look at the Collins Retention Pond and the Maxwell One Main Connections. Those are the two that I guess I see that there could be the debate or some question about whether they are not really part of the responsibility for the community when it comes to their water management, their stormwater system. I then, so that's one way, just as you're saying that maybe we need to talk about those more on that. Then I also, my criteria for economic development. And does that really go ahead and contribute? And how would that contribute? Then Maxwell, then, I'm going to look at Maxwell again. Maxwell clearly has a problem when it's, if this situation continues with their pipes and the water air connections, they literally are hurting businesses every time this happens. So from an economic development priority, that may be part of what those responsibilities should be, but they could suffer an immediate economic problem whether the next year if we don't get help for that.
Do you understand there were days that they had to be getting water in the town?
Correct.
Yes.
It is wider than that, but I think they were only looking for that amount. So that's how I look at Maxwell. Okay? From those two that I pulled out then. Then the, I also look at, is the entire community benefit? Well, the retention pond for Collins, that's a little bit more that, but you know, and that still. But the one that I bounce on, looking at who gets the entire benefit of is the Huxley Trail Connection. There's been a lot of money put down into the heart of Iowa Nature Trail. Huxley's gotten much money down there. And that particular one only benefits what I feel is a small portion of the community or the possibility of people not using it. So those are the ones that I guess everybody else needs my, my list of like seven criteria which range from how many times have they used them or used the money before to is this true economic development? You know, is it going to do something from an economic development standpoint? To does everybody in the community have potential to benefit? Those are, I think, my three.
I think you mentioned something about this hearing before, so I don't know what you mean.
I was hearing what I mentioned was that a park restroom, knowing that, that that park, how it's used, is I sent something about that it would, that I could see that while there ain't done the time, a lot of days where people come from outside the community, when certain days happens, when there are other activities, that the restroom itself, I could see the outlet and not into the community, but somewhere else, outside of that. Yeah, that's what I was trying to, so that was it. So those are my three that.
Yeah, I, I got through all this before I was gone. So I made some suggestions, talked to folks, you know, get a raise communities up to Downing Collins yesterday and part of the rounds and certainly just being the implications of their comfortable presence out there. Probably the one that I did have some questions on is some of their teachers' boards. And I agree, the cyclist, that the path is excellent. Then you, it does attract people to the community. One is the location pond. And secondly, the, I guess, I saw my top notations were, that the land over next to, it was interesting to me selling some of those properties for economic development. You know, with that, have the provision, is that the actual plan or not? That just angle a little bit of pause. I also kind of wondered in my mind, and I just didn't have the time for it, so I'm giving them a call. But I'm just kind of interested, was there communities who have some authority, I didn't want to themselves, in other cities, is that, could be on, only a little bit more widely than that, not a particular instance. But I can go with frequently any other.
Yeah, I know we talked about this. I don't know if you had a chance to talk with anybody in Collins. I was wondering about if the engineering firm that they had recommended what fund as their closing asset was really high in the solution.
It is part of the overall report that they had from the stormwater rates associated with here we have the reconfiguration, I'm just doing a sound six to five. That was done, but you're used to it. So it's part of, it's part of an overall revision plan that was spurred by that. About a complete renovation. But I don't have a call.
Um, you heard earlier that Cambridge, which is USDA, ran for two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for the opera house. That was pending, wasn't it, at the time they submitted?
Correct, yes. That's actually a loan.
That's a loan. So was that, they, they were considering that and what they asked us for?
They were. That was part of their, their third budget plan.
Right, I think, I think their proposal was addressing that gap. Isn't that correct?
And I've got a notice, I need to go back and look at some of theirs. I wasn't sure I understood the rationale from asking fifty thousand. Should come back and we'll chat about it.
Because they have a hundred thousand, right? And then, yeah, they were in the loans, they got a loan. But let me see, we, we gave us a, just that's a lot about, on the whole, yeah.
So I think the total cost for projects, I have a down.
So somehow eight five thousand dollars or something plus. That's correct. I in this presentation is a fundraising effort, so, yeah. So, yeah. So, you know, the fifty thousand they're asking for then is, what, about fifteen percent? And do you mind that, right? Now, this might give us a span here, seven fifty thousand divided by fifty. And you see, I get that through. So then the city of Cambridge budgeted items and Tiff, so they are planning on Tiffing it. We have a sheet that at least, I think it might have been distributing a maybe thirteen or the set, then it was from, I got something that Arden Brown had asked or the auditor's office to begin there about Tiff district, kind of that. Okay, so it shows here Cambridge is taking fifty percent of this Tiff. What it's got under Tiff is taking fifty percent. And another reason I was questioning, Huxley asked about why are they Tiffing? Well, they showed that they already have their Tiff and they're pulling, they're pulling ninety-seven. Oh, there's none of that. Yeah, so that was why they're not. So I guess, talking about some of the others, the role of pool, as I understand this, I see you all in there, but they're asking for something like that. I almost said, yeah, it's my understanding, Andy Webb, either what, Andy, if that, you did Tiff for the whole about, sorry, you didn't do a bond issue for the whole money? You only did a bond issue for three?
Well, we've got back to the time, we, we had four, four and a quarter million dollars for the maple with the green. And we're going to have to redo the bridge and that's going to be a big project.
Could you come?
And the way we're rolling and, yeah, so the city has been here with multiple projects all at once with the, the Lagoon project, which comes in with a four million, I mean, closer to four and a half. We, we can't get any grants or support on that, so we really are just great on that. The, and then the new bridge is going to have to pull in. And so those are two big ones, plus the pool. To do the pool, which would love to be three point six, we really pared it down to a little bit more. Three point six is just about our total borrowing power.
Oh, okay.
And so, the council forgot, but I, I told them, we really can't go with three point one. We've got to leave some, ruin case of emergency. And so we, we did not go and pull about, pull that recently. So, yeah. Meanwhile, we're trying to reduce the, over as much, any support figures for right now.
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, other questions?
Looking at, then I looked at, who's used the money in the past or not. So Roland's only used the money once. Nevada has only asked for the money once. Maxwell has only asked for the money once previously. So I, I also feel that Maxwell, you know, as I discussed earlier, why I brushed it off, but we had it here. And the digital side of the library seems to be a request that services the entire community. So if you'd like to obtain maybe motions of those that seem to be, some of these ones are support and take them individually and then we deal with what's left over or, I, I, I'm personally not sure that I want to just go, I think, you know, percentage to everybody because I think some of these projects were well, maybe the entire about who else is showing that the project was the one that was not.
Sort of criteria I'm hearing in the state are that it benefits the community at large and perhaps favors or give extra consideration to communities that have not utilized this fund of, or of a large amount. And you're saying, you're looking at Maxwell, and you did this, Nevada, and Roland?
No, I asked about Roland, I, I think. But, but if, I would, I would make the motion right now for Maxwell and Nevada. Roland has only already used it once. I'm going back and forth on that. I personally.
Are you looking at, when you say Maxwell, is it going to get out that full amount?
Correct, the full amount to start with.
To start with, are you looking at, wanting to discuss different amounts of any charity or any negotiating?
I don't know what to do, if you guys want to do.
Share there.
Yeah. I, 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 I mean, what you would like to do too is, is, is I consider is. So if you want to look at, I looked at probably starting with where I saw the full amount, like, you know, a lot of benefit.
Sure.
And then looking at negotiating about.
So where I'm looking at, man, I'm looking at, you know, I could grab that remuneration and use this for the area funding totals just under seven thousand dollars the last.
Maybe five years.
Right, that's second.
Two thousand and fifteen or sixteen. And what did you just say?
They're an applicant receiving funding in two thousand and fifteen.
Six thousand nine hundred.
Gotcha. But that's from all that they, they received. Whereas others got four and two, which is two hundred and fifty thousand.
Maybe you said that's an existing criteria, so, that was Roland, did they not fly in those other units?
Okay. There's so much to mark for word here. Thank you. I think that's.
So I was, so you've got Maxwell, Nevada, Illinois. I think you make a very good point about Huxley. It does not have as much benefits to the community as all. So since we are building, looking at getting, you know, needing to, we just, we just quite a bit. I would like to consider taking Huxley out.
I mean, I'm a guy.
Thoughts about Cambridge? I noticed Cambridge has that significant funding in the past.